We will have a moment of silent meditation and then pledge to the flag. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It is October 23rd. It is 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners here and we'll move forward with consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 19 exonerations for $8,773.66 minutes, Board of Assessment appeals from October 11th, 2019, and the commission meeting from October 16th, 2019. Vouchers: General County Fund, $38,059.57, Cole Severance, $442.90, 911, $17,501.33, Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,031.13, Camp Muffley, $2,086.80, Mason Dixon Park, $1,0291.01. Purchasing card vouchers, $33,000, uh, General County Fund, sorry, $33,797.58, Home Com, uh, wait a minute, 911, $10,002.20, Chestnut Ridge Park, $250.75, Camp Muffley, $617.72, for a voucher total of $106,373.21. Position vacancies for boards and authorities: the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, the Mon County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Abandoned and Dilapidated Enforcement Agency, and Clay Batel PSD. Fiduciary orders for October 23rd, 2019.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Thank you.
We do have another item.
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner.
I was gonna--
In the Scottschul estate, but Phil is going to be here, so can we wait for him?
We'll delay it till when he--
Okay.
You know, that's fine. Then we will have him speak on it. That's fine. Introduction of new employees and personnel changes. MJ, come on down. And you're gonna have to say the name.
Hi, good morning. Yes, this is Ayantu Deguma. I got that one.
Good.
She actually came from Ethiopia when she was six years old, so she is, you know, I think she just recently got citizenship, she said, so it takes a while to top. Yeah, but she graduates in December from WVU with a psychology degree, so she's gonna start some hours and then we have a girl going on maternity leave, so there will be an open position for some full-time work later, so.
Okay.
Move for approval?
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome. Ayantu?
Thank you. Ayantu.
Ayantu.
When we did the interview, I was like, "Help me remember that." She was like, "Ayantu." And I was like, "I got it. Ayantu."
Ayantu, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here for personnel change?
She didn't take the job.
Okay. Seeing none, I will go back and ask the Honorable Mr. Magro to come forward to discuss a situation that is ongoing.
Is ongoing.
Is the best way I could say it. Ang going. Ang going.
So, two days ago, on the Scottschul estate, there was a hearing in front of Judge Gajo regarding a requested writ of prohibition contesting the hearing that was supposed to be scheduled the first part of November. After Judge Gajo gave a history regarding the case, he announced in open court that his house has been for sale and he has now listed the house with Howard Hanna and the person in charge of selling that house is Susie Pappas. Yes. To which he then asked me whether or not that presented a problem and the answer is yes, it did because Susie Pappas stands to earn a ton of money if she sells the house and consequently, the judge basically voluntarily recused himself from hearing any further issues regarding this case.
For the public's benefit, Susie Pappas is the wife of--
Of Keith Pappas, who is the petitioner in the underlying case. I would direct the court's attention to Mr. Armstead's initial letter dated March 14th, 2019, when he withdrew from the case. And once he withdrew from the case, there was no further fiduciary commissioners to hear this matter. I would direct, again, the court's attention to the March 14th, 2019 letter, which he indicates as follows. Further by this letter, I am withdrawing from this matter and request that the county commission appoint a special fiduciary commissioner as soon as they are able to hear this matter. And at the conclusion of the hearing, I informed both Mr. Tolly and Judge Starcher that the county commission, the day after the underlying hearing was set, that they accepted three new fiduciary commissioners for which the county clerk can appoint one of the new fiduciary commissioners to hear this issue. And that's basically what I just sent an email to Mr. Tolly acknowledging that that was being done and that both Tolly and Starcher will be receiving a copy of that letter. And that's it in the nutshell.
Point of clarification, whenever the fiduciary commissioner Armstead sent us the letter, we didn't do anything with it. At that time, we didn't accept it. We didn't take an official action to accept it. We didn't take official action to say, "Okay, you're no longer the fiduciary commissioner," so.
We made it a part of the record, though.
We made it a part of the record that he was requesting that and I believe at that time, we had the conversation while at this point, that we weren't ready to release him yet because of, we wanted this thing to end. So I guess at one point, I would think to make things official, we should then accept his letter from whatever date and then move to appoint a new fiduciary commissioner.
When you say, you will be requesting that the county clerk appoint a new--
Correct.
Yes, sir.
But just for, to be technically clear, we didn't ever take an action. We recorded his letter, but we never took an action on it. So I move that we accept the letter that was sent by fiduciary commissioner Armstead to be removed, withdraw from being fiduciary commissioner and direct that the county clerk appoint a new fiduciary commissioner.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, is there any, is that clear? Or is there any issues that you see on your part?
Well, I believe that fiduciary commissioner Armstead was appointed originally because there was a petition for a removal of the first executor in that estate. And that was the only reason that he was appointed. The court then ruled on the second, the will that was to be probated. And if that's the wish of this body, we will appoint a new fiduciary commissioner. But the reason we did not appoint a replacement when Mr. Armstead resigned was because there was nothing for the fiduciary commissioner to do. Based upon the appraisement that was filed, it didn't meet the threshold for an automatic appointment and unless there was a ruling on the objections that's before the commission, there wasn't really anything for the fiduciary commissioner to do. But we will certainly do whatever the county commission requests for.
Phil, you can explain some more detail, but as I understand, when the court sent it back to us, there was a narrow scope that we were supposed to have a hearing.
There was basically two issues that were left pursuant to Judge Gajo's order. And just for points of clarification, this, those issues were in fact referred to Mr. Armstead to make a decision on.
And then he was having trouble having a hearing.
Pappas' fourth and final accounting, Starcher's second and third.
Exactly.
Where my question is, we would appoint another fiduciary, we start the process all over again, but I was in the assumption that the reason why we were gonna do the hearing, three of us, because all we would do is accept or deny the fiduciary agent's ruling, which means it's gonna come before us anyway. So I'm very confused why, and not to you. I don't understand why the judge would then go back when he put us in this situation. That's my question.
Well, you can say that the order put you in that position.
Okay.
But again, under Mr. Armstead's letter, he indicates that, again, Mr. Scottschul deserves to have a full confidence in the person making the recommended decision to the Montague County Commission. So yes, the fiduciary commissioner will be making a recommended decision to you and you will then be making a decision on whether or not to accept that.
Okay.
Also, it's the matter of the hearing on November the 7th that will need to be--
Yeah, that'll be the third thing we'll do.
So you'll need to make a motion to that effect.
Yeah, so I guess the next thing is, do we have a motion to refer it to the county clerk for a fiduciary agent?
I thought I just did.
Wish you just did. You guys just voted on it.
That was in.
Now you need to--
Cancel.
You need to continue the hearing that was set for November.
Move to continue the November 7th hearing.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But we also now have to cancel, do we not have to cancel the November 9th meeting?
What was November 9th?
No, I thought we just continued--
The hearing which was, I wanna say November the 7th.
November 7th.
Yeah.
I apologize, but I thought the first motion was to do away with, to accept Armstead.
There were two parts.
Oh, there's two parts to it. Okay, never mind. Now I understand. Okay, it's been, yes. This continues.
As the public can tell, this has been a very contentious case and--
Yes, okay.
We're just trying to bring it to a resolution.
So now it goes back to the county clerk to make a--
Try to bring it to a conclusion.
Yes, and this has been ongoing. Okay, thank you for--
You're quite welcome.
Thank you for showing up to clarify that. Okay, now we can move on, kind of, to comments from the public. You will have four minutes to speak. At this time, you can speak on any issue, if you state your name and address.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Louis Allen Scottschul, Sr. I'm a resident of Morgantown, West Virginia, 1444 Saratoga Avenue. In light of my uncle's estate, Arthur P. Scottschul, which you were just now presented with some evidence by the, I guess he is your counsel?
Yes.
Yes, he's the commissioner.
I have some objections to that. My first objection is that all these so-called rulings are based on a 2006 will, which that was found invalid March 7th of 2014, which creates back to the original will, which is dated June 30th of 2005, which makes me the executor of the estate again. I was the executor when this, my uncle died. I was also his agent in charge of all of Westover Realty. I have all the knowledge that is needed to set precedence over this estate to show what the benefits were, what the assets were, what the properties were, what the loans were, what needed to be filed, what needed to be recognized from day one of his death. And yet, I have gone through four administrators that have asked me to produce for them all of this information, which has been produced for them, and we're stuck here with a fourth and final accounting by Mr. Pappas of a reconstructed estate that has no bearing on the assets of this estate. At the time of his death, my uncle was worth close to $1.7 million and it got down to $75,000. I would like to ask this commission to please object to these proceedings and investigate this entirely. If they have to have the prosecuting attorney's office, do it because there is so much corruption in this whole situation. I have over $200,000 of my money tied up in this estate that I have not been paid one dime. But by every fiduciary in this room that has taken precedence over this estate has guaranteed me that these were administrative costs in order for this administration to move forward to the conclusion of this estate and I would be paid first before anybody else. I hold two deeds of trust, which one deed of trust was waived aside and a deed was given to a man and they sold property before the will contest even took place. The probation, I looked at the probate booklet. That probate booklet gave that fiduciary, if he wanted to move forward on it, the right to appoint a curator when this will contest was filed, October 2009. We didn't even go to trial on this will contest until March of 2014. There is something wrong with our system and it needs to be addressed immediately and this should be a precedent case for it. And I expect something done because this is ridiculous. I'm still losing money every day. I'm being told now that my deed of trust that I have on the last and final piece of property that Mr. Pappas sold before the will contest and failed to pay the bank note off, I had to put up one of my houses in order to pay that note, holding a deed of trust for this property to assure the actual beneficiaries of this estate something in return for my uncle, who wished me to proceed in carrying over his estate. We didn't want to sell for one minute and Pappas knew that from the get-go, that he was not to sell one piece of property. And this estate was taken in $7,000 and only had a $300,000 bill at Citizens Bank. And there's no excuse for this to happen, what has happened here. Thank you.
Thank you for your concern. Does anyone else like to speak? Yes, come on down. What happened? Are you okay?
A good tenant administrator had a wheelchair.
What happened?
I was out riding my dirt bike. I guess I'm doing some things I ought not to.
You can state your name and your address.
Joe Tennant, 734 Bethel Church Road, Maidsville, West Virginia.
Okay.
Couple, couple weeks back, I was in here and we spoke about the longstanding problem with some of the dilapidated properties. Can you, I didn't get to speak to Mr. Score about it, but you and Ed was here and we spoke. Has anything, developed anything come out of that? Can anybody comment?
Well, why don't you finish and then we'll--
This is your public comment.
Yeah, we're not allowed to speak yet. And then we will see if I can suspend the rules.
All right, well, concerning one of the properties that we spoke on,
Yes.
Right now, as we speak, there's a fire going on there and it's my understanding that we're still under some constraints, you know, with that and the burning of traction rubbish, I don't believe is loud anyway, is it? So, but it's going on right now and I'll be glad to provide a location and if you can take some action, action on that. The next thing is, I wanna touch on these subdivision regulations. I don't know if you all read these or not, but before I go into this farther, would you happen to have the property on Flagel Street that just was ceded?
Yes.
Okay, well then I'm sure as you drive out there, you know, and you go past those forced annexations and fair signs and you see how things like this can affect a landowner, I'd like to appeal to you specifically because I own several hundred acres and, you know, when people take action here, whether it's this commission or a delegated authority from this commission, you know, that affects everyone. Well, I've read through these and I keep finding problems, let's say. It's probably the nicest word I can find. And I refer over to different areas of legal remedies for these problems, if you will. And I'm seeing, I'm seeing issues that I don't want to affect me on this. I really think, you know, instead of rushing this through, because it's a well-known fact, for 50 years it's been going on. I've been in front of this commission myself, two years ago, about, you know, the first part of this. I was part of the Rural Alliance years ago whenever we fought this down. I mean, this is unpopular with a very large segment of the populace out there. Anyone that owns land, I think, is rightfully suspect of what's in it for them, so to speak, with these regulations. Now, do we need something in this county? Yeah. We got problems in this county? Sure we do. I'd like to appeal to you that maybe there's another answer with this. Instead of hammering another layer of rules down our throat, another layer of bureaucracy, let's take a closer look at some work you guys already did and piggyback off of this. This is the ordinance that ASIL and Bob Bell and John Powell's put through with the trash ordinance, the dilapidated buildings, things like that. Maybe this needs to be, and there's a layout, are you guys familiar with this, what I'm talking about?
I can't see what your point, what you're holding up.
I'll be glad to toss.
We'll get a, yeah, we'll make a copy.
Well, you know, there's a work that was done here with respect to different ways to address these issues and the people, you know, the sheriff's office, the health department, an engineer, things like that. You know, let's maybe look at expanding this to take care of drainage and some of these other issues that are supposedly gonna be cured by these regulations. And then another big one that you hear about is, hi Carrie, I didn't see there. Another big one you hear about is the salvage and junkyards, things like that. Well, there again, we've already got--
Yeah, if you could put to conclusion, because you've had your--
Well, okay, my big conclusion is, I don't think we need this, but I think that if we can tweak maybe what we already have and give it some teeth, it will bring about, you know, a much more palatable solution to problems that are needed, especially by landowners like myself.
Right. Thank you for coming up here with your, that you were able to come up here and we appreciate. I'll ask to suspend the rules if anyone wants to respond to the dilapidated building part of it.
Well, I'm not aware. I wasn't here when you talked. I moved to, go ahead, we suspend the rules so you guys can address it, but I have no knowledge.
We turned all information over to Mr. Fitchard and his department. I could get a response by you for next week and we could send that to what exactly is being done. So on that part, I can tell you. The second part I would strongly urge, and I think all three of us would, is that if you have those specific questions and concerns, that you contact the county planner on those specific areas, because that's what a number of individuals have been doing. So we get specific concerns because we've dealt for 30 years generalities and we need to move forward on this and that's what we're gonna try and do. So we're gonna try and take what your concerns are and adapt them in the processes. Is there anything that Ed, you want to just say or?
Well, no, you pointedly said right there--
I know. I can't have you respond. I'm sorry. I'm not allowed to have you respond.
All right.
But that's why, you can tell them to us, but it would make more sense for you to go to the county planner with the specific comments and concerns and we're gonna be looking at all that in the next. We've actually delayed it for another six weeks.
The other point too, is when those actually do come before us, we'll have public hearings. But the document, I wanted to confirm what document you were asking us to look at. Can you tell us what that is?
Sure. Colin, could you get--
I don't know the number.
It's the E-ordinance for the ban on dilapidated properties.
I just wanted to confirm that. Is that what it is?
Okay, and that's what we've been working on. Okay. Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, we'll have the public portion. Comments from the public close. We now have grants and we do not have any grants. We now have correspondence and we have no--
We just have one.
Oh, good.
A while back, we were contacted by the Association of Counties regarding a class action lawsuit regarding federal underpayments.
Yes.
And we received a check in the mail for the county's portion, less per rata share of attorney fees. The check is in the amount of $7.
Of all the pilts, we've done $7. Well, thank you. We will, can't wait to cash that and put it in our accounts. Unfinished business? Do we have any unfinished business? No? Okay, move into new business. Consideration approved, a request for proposals to be signed and distributed to a minimum of three ICPA firms on the list of appointed firms and all approved ICPA firms that have expressed interest in submitting a written proposal for the fiscal 2019 audit as directed by the West Virginia State Auditor's Office. And this is just self-explanatory.
Move for approval? Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Any other new business?
No, sir.
Request from elected officials. Do we have anything moving on? Reports from county commissioner, Sean?
Yeah, mine will be very brief. Since the last time we met, Thursday, at Mylan Park Board Meeting. And then on Friday, we had our extension building walkthrough. Today, we have regular business. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the MAP Director, Russ Rogerson, and then I'll also be meeting with the Mylan Park Executive Director to discuss the joint use management agreement, which we're working out between Mylan Park and the View. Friday, we have our extension building walkthrough and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
This past week, I did speak to Commissioner Don Smith from Preston County and we had personally discussed a recreational issue that I would like to bring up on agenda item for discussion on next week, which is a support of the Friends of Cheek in removal of the dam at Albright. This is an obstacle in the cheat that prevents kayakers from continuing on down the Cheek River. So I would just ask that that be placed on the, he's going--
Work session?
Yes, he's going to be sending me a letter, so.
On a work session? Yeah, this still works. So we know, yeah.
Friday, we did meet at 4H and Extension Building. Monday, I will have camp board meeting at Camp Muffley and again, we'll be at the Mylan Park for a meeting on the 4H and Extension Center. I'm still squeaking. We have not heard from our governor. We still have no word from DOH regarding the running list that we've requested. I will let Tom speak further to this after I wish my, today is my mother's birthday. Were she with us still? It would be 91 years. I forgot her birthday one time and she never let me forget it. So even though she's deceased, Mom, happy birthday in heaven.
Thank you. Four issues. The first, the very positive, this Saturday at Mylan Park, we have an open house to the public from 11 to 5 and I will call it a sampler of services of what's gonna be happening at the pool. So I just opened that and wanted to throw that out, so, and yes, they will be allowed to go swimming and use the, all the community pool. So I did want to throw that out. Okay, I have three other issues. The first, I want the public to know that all three commissioners wrote a letter to President Guy for his support in help fixing the lights on the Mon Boulevard that head up the Coliseum. This issue has not been resolved for over two years and with the WVU basketball season about to begin, this has become a serious and dangerous situation that the DOH has refused to fix. We have asked them to join with us and I just received an email just right about an hour ago, who is 100% in agreement to see what we can do to get those lights fixed. There's no other way to say it, but there's no excuse for the DOH to continue to turn their back on this issue. It's a safety and lighting issue and with the basketball season about to begin, we're very concerned. So we will move forward on that. The second, to continue with what Commissioner Hawkins has stated, I want to share that the public, that we are sending a certified letter to the governor with a packet of all the roads that were submitted to me in the last two weeks. I will not read the letter, but I did submit the letter to the media. I do just want to state where we have requested a sit-down meeting with them and the state DOH. We've requested that since July. We're asking it again to quote, "Discuss future plans and concerns to how to resolve our issues and serious problems that are plaguing us in the county." I happened to meet with House of Delegate Member Tim Miley, who was very supportive of seeing what he could do to help get the governor up here. It's been a concern and he's very surprised that he will not-- he's very surprised that he will not come up here in the state DOH officials. Which brings up my third issue. We keep trying to come up with different ideas and to get the governor up here in the state DOH. I guess my concern is we are painting roads up here. We are not fixing roads. We are not fixing culverts, and we are not taking care of a planned decision for the roads, and I'm tired of painting the roads that we have. What I am requesting is to offer another alternative. I am suggesting that in Morgantown, that we hold a public forum in early December for all Democratic, Republican, and independent candidates who are running for governor. However, the issues that would be during this forum would only be related to the North Central Region, and I would offer each county in that area to submit questions. Then this will be done again before the legislative session, and I will share more details on the specifics of where and when it's gonna be held, but we need these issues to be discussed and related only to the North Central area. And that is my conclusion, unless...
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Poppy moved in second. All those in favor, well, we be gone. Thank you.